I'd like to call the Monday, June 8th, regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. Public may comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. And I see several people in the audience. Does anyone wish to speak this morning? Okay. All right. Seeing none, then we will move to Agenda Item 2, the Clear Lake Overlay Zone. And Zach and Terry are here to help us, and I'm guessing Robin may jump in as needed. So, all right, we'll turn it over to Zach.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Commissioner Rander said, we're here to talk about the Clear Lake Overlay Zone, which is essentially our implementation zone for the urban growth boundary expansion that's proposed near the airport for the Clear Lake area, Clear Lake Study Area.
And Zach, if you could get right into the microphone.
Right into the microphone. Yeah. So, we've been working for the last few months with a subcommittee, which is comprised of three of your peers here, Commissioner Duncan, Mills, and Taylor, as well as representatives of the Sustainability Commission, the Human Rights Commission, our Toxic Right to Know Program Board members and program manager. So, a very good cross-section of different boards and commissions here with interest in this topic. Our Clear Lake Overlay Zone is intended to take on two major issues, our large lot preservation, as well as environmental justice concerns in this part of the community. As background, you all have seen this Community Vision map from our Envision Eugene recommendation back in 2012. The expansion area proposed at that time included areas north of Clear Lake Road for industrial and employment uses, essentially squeezed in between Highway 99 and the Eugene Airport. Just as way of background, as to where the environmental justice issue arose before council and why we have this direction before us, the residential component there that's highlighted in the red circle drew some attention and was requested, I guess, that we remove that and look more closely at the citing of industrial and employment uses in an area that's already got a lot of those uses. So, we received council direction to look more deeply into the environmental justice component, which I'll get to at the conclusion of the presentation. We also have an economic opportunity analysis before us as part of our urban growth boundary expansion work. And in the course of doing that, the report produced an industrial and employment land need of about 500 acres, 495, and the need, more specifically, the need for 11 sites of various size ranges. Those ranges are all based on the types of industry or employers that are likely to locate in Eugene, based on a variety of factors that set our city apart from others, different competitive advantages. When you see that 495 number there, keep in mind that is a range, based on the range of site sizes. And within the expansion area, we're looking at, let's see, what shows up as, well, what's intended to show up as pink here, north of Clear Lake, as well as the gray area, which are labeled here, light, medium industrial and campus industrial, comprise about 640 acres of expansion area within that. There's about 150 that we know are natural features, wetlands of degraded quality, but nevertheless there. So, really, the 495 is developable. We're looking for developable acreage. So, that's just background and big picture. And the key in that economic opportunity analysis, the key finding, was that Eugene had industrial land but lacked large lots. So, that is really the justification for the expansion and therefore puts the onus on this Clear Lake Overlay Zone to protect those large lots and ensure that we don't subdivide those away and lose the very reason for which we're expanding. So, what's highlighted here is what the zoning would be over these areas, and specific to the topic today, the CL is our Clear Lake Overlay. So, in our work with our, one big point, I guess, I should point out as well is that generally, in looking at the compatibility issue and the environmental justice issue at the macro level, we considered the spatial arrangement of the land uses as a first step, essentially. So, the Bethel neighborhood is just off the screen here, the northern edge of the Bethel neighborhood. This is Terry Street, just as a reference. The Jerry's Home Improvement Store is here on the right side of the screen. So, you've got the whole Bethel neighborhood, which is very close to this area and is effectively separated by a 222-acre park that's also proposed as part of our expansion area, transitions into campus industrial, which is essentially kind of a suburban office park-type setting or intended to be so. And then light, medium industrial gets a little more intensive, and that is the I-2 Zone, which is also what you see on Airport Road currently. So, you can just imagine the types of uses that are out there as a frame of reference. So, we've tried at the macro level and with our plan designations to transition from the residential to the higher-density uses with a kind of a gradation approach there. So, going into our large lot industrial needs and the need to preserve the large lots, we looked at a couple of different options, beginning with something that was very prescriptive and locked in essentially what our EC analysis had done, had shown was viable in the area, based on the amount of natural features. And that produced, if you'll look off the screen here over to the board on the shelf, there's this bubble diagram. So, we had a good sense of how many, of what sort of wetlands were out there, what sort of development constraints, and that gave us a point of departure. We realized that the prescriptive approach maybe didn't reflect the uncertainty around the wetland features or the natural features. So, we had some misgivings about saying, do exactly what's on the bubble diagram. The other option or the other extreme was a first-come, first-served approach, which just laid out those 11 sites that were deemed necessary through the EOA, and then just saying, whoever comes in, we'll do the accounting on our side and allow the subdivision to occur. That presented the ultimate flexibility, but not necessarily certainty that we were going to get all the large lots that we needed. So, we were trying to strike a balance with the subcommittee working on this to get the flexibility on one side and the certainty on the other that we could meet the large lot needs. So, the next four bullets that are up there relate to the code that is in front of you. If you were to turn to Page 4 of your Planning Commission packet, within our Conference of Plan Policies, we've said that we will preserve our large lots to be subdivided no less than 10 acres. So, that's reflected here in the Clear Lake Overlay Zone with a minimum lot size of 10 acres. And then there are essentially three options before you, as we've currently drafted this. A prescriptive option, which still allows some degree of flexibility, which just shows up there as number 2. And then there in kind of parentheses, it's just kind of shorthand with the subcommittee to help us stay focused on what exactly that means, which is to do what the map shows. That allows people to use the existing land use process, a subdivision or a partition, not a PUD, not a CUP, so we reduce some of the complex regulatory process around that, but allow people to subdivide based on a different map that I'll show in just a second. There's a flexible option, which allows you essentially to move the puzzle pieces around. And then there's a last option that looks forward into the future, once we secure the 11 options or the 11 large lots. And I'll walk through these now. So, as I said, we tried to build off of our environmental analysis in the area, which produced this bubble diagram that lays out the hypothetical development arrangement based on the wetland features and the different drainage sloughs that are prevalent in the area. Excuse me. And this was our point of departure, but we realized very quickly that we can't really adopt a bubble diagram that's so conceptual into our land use code. So, it just gave us a good reference with our subcommittee working towards a more specific approach. That transitioned into this diagram, which attempts to secure, like I said, that certainty around the 11 lots while also being somewhat flexible for the landowners. So, we've assigned these categories, A, B, C, and D, to each developments. The dotted red lines use property lines, right-of-ways, and the different natural features in the area to prescribe the development type or the development size in the area. So, this is essentially, this is our prescriptive option. And when you see that we're requiring the size range there, the flexibility comes, if you're wondering, because it does look like a very prescriptive option. So, just to highlight one site as an example, B, north of Airport Road, is required. So, this property owner is required to provide a site that falls into this category, B. You've got a range of 20 to 50. This whole site is about 40 acres. So, at a minimum, based on our EOA, our economic opportunity stated need, we're looking for at least a 120-acre parcel out of these 40. Now, there's wetlands on the site, which will, some will be able to be filled and mitigated, others likely not, based on DSL process, the Division of State Lands, excuse me, and their wetlands permitting process. But at the very least, we're going to get 120-acre site out of this. And then, based on that 10-acre minimum lot size, a landowner could subdivide and create some other 10-acre lots. So, there is some flexibility there for the landowner and for the future developer, and then also certainty on our side that will, that the city will get the large lots that are needed. Jumping ahead to the more flexible option, we've created subareas, north, central, and south, which correspond to Airport Road, or the delineation point, rather, is Airport Road and Clear Lake Road. And within this, as we've called it, as I've added a little shorthand in the code for you all, this is essentially where you, where landowners can move the puzzle pieces around. So, within the subarea, this encourages different landowners to coordinate, work through parcel assemblage, and then deviate from this map and instead move the puzzle pieces as they are to meet the needs of a developer or the reality of wetland features on the ground and whatever their needs may be. So, there's still the certainty, the accounting is still built into the process on our side to ensure that we get the 11 large lots, but it allows greater flexibility on the ground among multiple landowners to work within the subareas and move the puzzle pieces around as necessary. And then, there's no graphic for Section 4, but I did just want to point out, on Page 5 of your Agenda Packet, it's highlighted as reducing minimum lot size. This is looking well into the future and allowing, again, kind of maximum flexibility. Once we've expanded the UGB, we're committed to getting these 11 large lots. In the, with the flexibility I've described, there's allowances to use that minimum lot size and get additional 10-acre sites throughout. But at some point, we realize that there may be, you know, a lot of large lots sitting out there. Maybe there's fragments that are left over, six acres here, eight acres there, that the 10-acre minimum lot size could essentially handicap smaller-scale development that wants to locate around the large-scale employers. So, at that point, once we've got the 11 large light, the large lots, this provision would allow a landowner to use those little remnants and go back and revert to the base zone, so the I-2 and the E-1 zones respectively, to use those minimum lot sizes, which are two acres in the case of E-1 and even smaller than that in the I-2. So, that would just allow them to, like I said, use the remnants without going through a zone change for small parcels and pieces that are left over. At that point, before diving into the environmental justice aspects of the Clear Lake Overlay, I just wanted to break and take any questions, because I know that's a lot to digest.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Jaworski.
The last thing that you mentioned, I don't know what that, after the flexibility option, they're allowed to when the lots are all, when you've met all 11 of your lots, they're allowed to subdivide further?
That's correct.
I was wondering, since you have three subareas, north, south, and central, if north developed, let's just say, taking north, D and B, developed the lots that could be there, and there were small fragments left over, why couldn't they be allowed to do something without you having to wait, because nothing else could be done there, until all the others below that have done theirs to meet your 11?
Hmm.
Could be years. And I'm saying that if a section meets it, it should be, that flexible little lots over there maybe could occur, because they can't be made anyway.
Okay.
I think that's what it says, though, isn't it?
Within the particular subarea?
Once the minimum number of-
No, it says all 11 have to be met.
What's the minimum number of lots required? Yeah, so, that is how it's, it is currently drafted as subarea, but I described it as being all 11. So, you're correct, it is based on subarea. So, to your point.
Okay.
The written word actually describes that accurately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other comments? Oh, Commissioner Duncan.
Yeah, I think the main difference, if I understand it, is, you know, one of the proposals, once we meet the needs within an area, subarea, or however we end up going with the two proposals, one only allows you to subdivide to a minimum of 10 acres and nothing below that. The other one does allow for further division below the 10 acre. And I think that's real key to talk about, and it's something that we've wrestled with, because if you end up with a large employer in an area, there's a lot of times where you're going to get support companies coming in that need smaller lot sizes. So, it's a question to be discussed, yet we want to make sure we protect large lots so that we don't end up with just scatterings of small subdivisions everywhere and end up the same way we are right now, and that is, we have plenty of industrial land. Unfortunately, it's all in, most of it's under one acre in size, and it's just scattered everywhere. And so, assemblage is not really an option. So, I think that's really important, to understand what that difference really allows and a place I think the discussion needs to occur.
I don't see any other comments, so.
Okay. Let me just make a note here on the point.
I think the way I was seeing that is that it would be within the particular subarea, could revert to the base zone standard, which for employment would be, is that two acres, I think? And then industrial could be smaller?
That's correct. The I-2 is even smaller than the 2. Yeah.
But that is, so if that north area developed first and got to our-
So, that D would be-
Required 20-acre and 75-acre parcel, then you could then subdivide what's left-
Much smaller.
Much smaller, but only within the limits of the base zone standard.
Correct.
Okay. Which, there's no E-1 up there.
No, no, no. So, it would be-
That could even go smaller.
I can check if there are concerns about that.
I don't know that I have concerns about it. It's more of an observation.
In fact, you already see that a little bit on Airport Road. There are a few dots there on the north side of Airport within the area labeled as B. So, there already exist a couple that are-
Smaller.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the I-2 minimum lot size is down to 6,000 square feet, so.
Pretty small.
Very small.
Yeah. Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's certainly an issue we can take back to the subcommittee, work through, and have a very detailed discussion about, and then kind of weigh whether there are any ramifications for doing that, for allowing that prior to getting all the other 11 sites or the-
I think an advantage that I see to that is that it would allow development to potentially occur a little faster, and it would also not, it would, I think, encourage the development to happen throughout the entire area rather than just in one specific location. So, I think there's some pluses to that.
Other comments from the commission? Okay. I'm going to start on the environmental justice.
Okay. So, as I said at the beginning, we were also directed by council to look at, which is very broadly referred to as environmental justice concerns in the Bethel neighborhood and specifically in this area, and the concerns around citing more industrial and employment uses in this part of town, where we already have a lot on Highway 99. A lot of our work has been focused, well, there was a large-scale research project, which you all saw the outcome of, the Environmental Justice White Paper, which looked into best practices from around the country. We've relied on that body of research in this work. There's also been a fair amount of inter-agency coordination, which I think is new for our agents or for our division. We've worked with Wayne County Public Health, LRAPA, and then the city's own Toxic Right to Know Program, looking to a lot of those agencies for different data sources and different local practices and better understanding the different roles that the agencies play within this, within this field. We've attempted to infu, or introduce those agencies into our land use process in kind of a soft way, not necessarily bringing them in as regulatory agencies on the, in the land use world, but it seemed like the best fit in coordinating with their staff and discussions with our subcommittee was to involve those entities in an early stage. Excuse me. So, referring back to the code on Page 5, beginning with Section 9.4170, you'll see special application requirements, which requires or calls for early coordination with LRAPA. So, this gives LRAPA an opportunity to get in on the ground floor of our land use process and basically just bakes a, bakes in a pre-application meeting and stage with any sort of potential developer to coordinate with LRAPA at an early stage. We're also calling for, or proposing a neighborhood meeting of any sort of developer with the immediate neighborhoods. That would be the active Bethel citizens and I think the industrial corridor, commercial-
Community organization.
Community organization, the ICCO. Sorry, I use the acronym so often, I forget what it stands for. Those two community organizations would be picked up in our notification, as well as area property owners, and that just reflects the neighborhood meeting process that's already included within our development code. There's also a package of performance standards that you'll see there on the following page that speak to noise, lighting, stormwater, a requirement for any manufacturing operation south of Clear Lake Road to take place indoors. And then the last two, odors and vibration, are included here, but I'll highlight them now to say that our subcommittee is determining where the best location in our city code is, because this really is, the odors and the vibration is more of an enforcement issue. With the tools available to us within the Planning and Development Department, we feel like the odor and vibration is better suited in the enforcement arena and not necessarily upfront in the land use code. So, we're working with our code enforcement staff to determine whether we need any sort of code amendments in what's Chapter 6, the environmental, the environmental section of our code. Let's see. There's also a separation requirement, which you'll see is specific to schools and residential uses. The physical arrangement, as I highlighted at the beginning, attempts to do this, and of course, the citing of the park creates quite a buffer from the Bethel neighborhood as it is today. But this is just an additional level of separation for particular uses, which, based on research and input from our different agency partners, were viewed as either, in some way, a nuisance, primarily around odors, particulates, and different dust and that sort of thing. If you look at these uses, concrete mixing, for example, is going to have a lot of dust and that sort of thing. So, and then you've got trucking terminals, service stations, which all have serious odors associated with them. So, introducing the separation requirement was a best practice in different agencies around the country that we're introducing here or proposing to introduce here as well. And then lastly, also in the vein of the environmental justice topic, is our list of prohibited uses, and that's on Page 7 of the code. This goes beyond our typical nomenclature for the, for our land use code. So, you'll see some specific uses here that aren't necessarily seen elsewhere in our land use code. Just that level of specificity, again, is based on research and specific proposals out of different agencies around the state and the nation. And again, they're primarily related to nuisance and odors that, in close proximity to a residence, a school, would not be, not be very pleasant. I use this example with our subcommittee. A paper mill is something that could make it through the LRAPA process, could meet clean air standards, but in close proximity to someone's house, I'm sure we've all smelled a paper mill, and the odor is such that it's just not very pleasant. So, that's why you see some of these like that on the list, just as an example. There is an adjustment proposed as well that relates specifically to the performance standards and the separation standards, and those criteria attempt to articulate in code essentially the triple bottom line analysis without invoking that tool, but instead relying on preservation of natural resources, increased employment densities, and a couple other factors or criteria that are there on Page 10. And I, again, since I wanted, I highlighted earlier some points of discussion or departure between our, in our subcommittee, I would note that on the prohibited use list, we're still kind of working through whether that's enough uses or if it's too many uses, and whether some of these uses should be given flexibility to justify why they won't have the potential negative impacts on the community. And what tool we use to provide that flexibility is to be determined. We have a, whether that's a CUP or including them within the adjustment review is still something our subcommittee is debating at this point. So, there, let's see, there are a couple outstanding issues. Like I said, the nuisance and moving those, the odor and the vibration, most likely into our nuisance code in Chapter 6, and not necessarily attempting to establish a standard here is, seem to be the direction our subcommittee was moving. Questions around the prohibitions versus a CUP or another vehicle, perhaps the adjustment review is something our subcommittee's still working through. And of course, as with all of our code work, we always like to confer with our city attorney's office and ensure that it's up to muster. And then lastly, I'll just note that the process, as you probably have picked up by now, is not finished. We're going to return to our subcommittee for at least one more meeting after this, probably later in the month of June. The Environmental Justice Focus Group, which worked with us in reviewing the research paper, is also going to be presented with this, and we'll seek their input. Last week of June, tentatively scheduled for the week of June 22nd, we have a Clear Lake- of June 22nd, we have a Clear Lake neighbors and property owners meeting. Logistics are still being worked out for that, but that'll be a broader discussion of urban growth boundary expansion in general, but we'll also have plenty of time to focus on the Clear Lake zone as well. And I think this will all be rolled into our UGB adoption package as something that you all will see and be able to sink your teeth into again, I'm sure. So with that, I'll take any questions on this section.
All right. Thank you, Zach. Commissioner Duncan.
Yeah, a few things. Obviously, he's one of the subcommittee members. I'm happy to see that odor and vibrations is actually something that will maybe sit in code six. Under separation, maybe just a little change of a word. It says permitted use under table, such and such shall not be located within a thousand square feet of properties planned for schools and residential use. Is the word planned there being planned designation?
Yes.
And I think that should be laid out, because I was going to say zoned or whatever.
Sure.
And then I still have, as we've talked about, the affected uses or permitted use affected by separation. I think it's important that we, we well define these uses. Again, metal product fabrication, if I'm making keychains out of some stamped material inside a building, is that fabrication? Yes. But is it what we do it means? So I think we have to figure out a way to get to a magnitude somehow if we're going to do that. And then secondly, on motor vehicle transportation equipment, I'm going to gather we don't have that really defined. So again, if I'm in making floor mats for cars, that's a, is that affected? I mean, I don't think that's what we mean. So again, I think it needs to be real clear because too many times if you get a company come rolling into town to look at something, they're going to look at this and say, wow, there's eight other communities that don't have this requirement. We'll just move on. So you never get to the point of getting them to understand what adjustment review, because adjustment review throughout the country varies a lot. It can be very stringent in some areas and very lenient in others. So if there's, it just seems to me that those things need to be fairly well-defined somehow, what we're talking about and why are they affected or why are they not, so on and so forth.
Understood.
I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I've got, I'll cover three points and I'll send it back to the table. My first question, Zach, is under 941701A, just the wording and the intent demonstrate that the lane, that El Rapa has reviewed the proposal and issued a preclearance letter that confirms the proposal use and associated operations.
Understood.
And are in compliance or have the ability to meet air, they're not going to issue a letter that says it's in compliance. I cannot imagine that.
True, true.
They're going to say it has the ability to meet it. So I question the wording, are in compliance. It doesn't seem to be a practical requirement.
Sure. That's a good point and we will-
I mean, I understand that's what everybody wants to make sure happens, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And it will, but I don't think we can expect El Rapa to do something at that stage like that.
Yeah, and they'll certainly have more opportu- in my conversation with staff, they're going to review this and make sure they're comfortable with it before going forward.
Next one is page, Agenda Page Six, under B5, odors. Just the comment that, you know, you've used a, a number heading of as odors and it's really kind of a lot more than odors you're talking about here. And this may end up going to enforcement, but I'd suggest it ought to be air emissions or atmospheric emissions as a category and then it includes odors.
Okay.
Because that's all kinds of stuff that could happen.
More comprehensive, okay.
Just as a, last one I'll, and then I'll turn it back, is under table 941702, item metal products fabrication, machine welding shops. In parentheses, it says no blast furnaces. Now, I used to work on a blast furnace and, and in a steel mill and a blast furnace can't be built for less than about a billion with a B dollars. Okay? And it has to have all other kinds of stuff that you could never get permitted and it would have to be a heavy industrial. It's just, this, maybe they, maybe something else is meant by a blast furnace, but a blast furnace is so far out of the realm of possibility, it doesn't need to be here. I mean, it's not going to get built. It's just, there hasn't been, the last new blast furnace in North America was built in the 60s. So.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem?
I have myself in the queue. I have two questions. One, on the parkland, how, I can't really tell from the map, is it more than a thousand feet north to south, the park itself?
It is. It's, it's over 2,000, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then my second question gets back to the nuisance versus the standard. And I guess my question for that would be, if we do put that under the chapter six, do we have, or is the council maybe willing to commit enough money to have staff to actually enforce that? You know, it seems like on a lot of the enforcement issues, we're very short-staffed, like parking and signs and those sorts of things.
Sure.
And I would think if this gets lumped into the enforcement issues, if there's really enough protection there by having enough staff to actually enforce that when there is a complaint. So I just want to throw that out for something to consider.
In our conversations with code enforcement staff, they felt comfortable with taking on these responsibilities and the odors is something that they already do. The vibration they had more questions about, but-
Because some of this are already enforcing.
Correct.
Yeah.
But you're, you're spot on and I will ask that question of them as we move towards implementation.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners Traworski or Taylor?
I'll just bring it up at this time. I was thinking about what Commissioner Duncan had talked about in terms of providing some kind of general description for the permitted uses to address scale. And rather than going to each use maybe a descriptive purpose or applicability and then move it towards zone verification. I think zone verification is a really useful tool to evaluate that. And it's used similarly in the rest of the code. Rather than addressing every single use and the particulars of every single use, it allows a little bit more flexibility to, for the property owner to demonstrate that they fit.
Go back to Commissioner Mills, if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. And I guess I'll, I'll add two more comments and then, well, first I want to offer that I think the work that the subcommittee's done has been great in the working environment and the subcommittee has been great. I think everybody's walked into an excellent determination to try to work together. So that's been great to see. The other comments I have, one is just a general, on the same item for odors, and I, I support the idea of it moving to enforcement, but I also question some of the ability to, I know they're saying it's, but I'm, I'm a little hesitant. I'd like to hear more about what they have to say about that so I can understand how, how they'll enforce that.
Okay.
And then my last comment is, is going to be general in nature and it has to do with the, with the exclusions. And I think that, once again, and I know this has been kind of my, one of my roles is kind of questioning some of the exclusions that are on here. I think some of these are historical and they don't really have a bearing on the present or the future. And I think that I've been generally agitating for trying to get some of these removed or better defined. Because I think that they're, in some cases, they're there and they don't make sense or they, they're restricting a lot more than I think we intend them to restrict. So I won't go into specifics unless you ask me to, but, but I have some concerns about, about the, the exclusions that are there now. I'm just mentioning that to the other commissioners here.
Would you, yeah, I would like to hear which ones-
Yeah, I, I don't want to, you know, I think this is a little bit of an old saw, but I'll walk down a couple of these.
It would be helpful for the broader commission to hear.
Commissioner Mills, which table are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm on table 941703 on Agenda, PC Agenda Page Seven.
Thank you.
And, you know, some of these, I just ask, you know, if we've got a light industrial that meets all the requirements, why would we not allow them to do manufactured or mobile homes? I don't understand why the restriction. Explain why that's something you wouldn't want to have. I mean, I, I don't understand that one. I understand the hesitation around paper mill, but once again, you have to be careful here because there are paper converting operations that don't involve any odor. They have to have noise abatement because they are running machinery, but they're not making odors, they're not making vapors, they're turning big pieces into little pieces effectively. Recreational vehicles, I'm not sure why that would be, you know, I guess I'm thinking here that this has to do with paint. Paint is, we talked before, I think the concern was VOC emissions around painting operations. And once again, those are subject to El Rapa.
That's true, that's true.
And that's my three minutes.
That's your three minutes?
So several, so several of these that you've highlighted are really rooted in, you're right, historical practices locally or statewide, wherever the source was produced in our research, formaldehyde, VOCs, all these things, kind of the off-gassing things that-
That are incurred by, by current standards or, you know, new standards and would not be grandfathered in. And I'll take the liberty of just one thirty-
I'm okay giving you some more time. We've got, we're doing fine today, so.
Just to go on with some of the other ones I've questioned here, and that one of them was the cogeneration plant slash biomass. And I believe that's another historic reference to a Seneca-type project. Okay, so I have to reveal that this, this is an area I spent a good part of my life engineering, building, and maintaining. So the thing about it is that when you put cogeneration down here, you exclude a whole category of beneficial energy-related projects that can be very good for the environment. So to put cogeneration down here as an item that you want to exclude is, I feel, a restriction you don't want to have. You absolutely don't want to have this. Now, if you're talking about large biomass-based cogens, you know, and you don't want another Seneca project because, and I understand why some people feel that way, I think you need to have another way to describe it. That's all I would say. This is, this is too general. And it also, if it's biomass, you know, you're, on the permitted side, you've got composting. Well, composting is biomass by and large. So to me, there's a, a little bit of inconsistency there.
So if the, just as a follow-up question, since the justification for including some of these uses was the VOC emissions, would it make, in your opinion, would it make more sense to put these into the separation category since it's about the odors and being too close to schools, parks, that sort of thing?
You know, I haven't lived there, so I'm not going to discount the experiences of the people that live there. But I want to point it out that, that when you say, you know, we don't want to build manufactured homes, I ask why. And, you know, you know, we're going to have separation requirements, we're going to have, you know, environmental standards on these, we're going to have, we have to talk about what kind of enforcement we have. But I just want to raise those questions because I think they, they take out a lot of potential opportunities for employment here.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Taylor.
Actually, Commissioner Mills brings up a good point. If, what I know we've been trying to do is work towards more of a dynamic document that also has flexibility. And like you said, if we're actually specifically having both of these tables, the separation table as well as prohibit, that are uses that aren't no longer really reflecting what the desires are or purposes, but there will be new ones and they're not on this list. So I think maybe considering in both, having more of a description of what generally, why the separation's there with as much specificity as we can.
Like an intent.
An intent.
Description for that code section.
Because then when there's a zone verification for a use that's not listed in the industrial employment zone or these, that the zone verification, there's clear understanding that that particular use actually should be separated or prohibited.
Got it.
Because you're right, it's not getting at the core root, actually.
And if I could just add on to that, I think some of the danger here lies in the things that we're not putting down.
Right.
Because we haven't imagined them yet.
Yes.
But they could be very difficult and they could be very problematic.
Or they could be good.
Or they could be good.
Or they could be bad line.
Or they could be good.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that, and I think there's going to be a lot of pressure for that as we move into the new world. You're going to see a lot more recycling, a lot more things that are, that are deemed carbon-friendly but are difficult. And, and they're not on the list and we haven't imagined them yet or we haven't experienced them yet, but they're going to come. And so I think to have, have, I guess I'll just leave it at that.
And I have myself in the queue too. Did you have a response, Zach, or?
No, no, I just said, thanks, those are good ideas.
And I guess, kind of tagging on to that, I guess my question would be, do the El Rapa standards, our separation standards that we have and the odors or emissions category, whichever we decide to call that, I like the idea of emissions, do those provide enough protection to address some of the ones I think that you're talking about that maybe don't need to be prohibited, like the manufactured mobile homes, RVs, using those two specifically? If they can meet those standards for El Rapa and, you know, the emissions and that, then why just outright prohibit them? I mean, is that kind of what your point is?
The things the subcommittee-
And I think that gives some flexibility, but I wasn't on the subcommittee, so.
Right. Well, I was just going to say, one of the things that has been discussed a lot is the concept of, or the idea that a lot of things can get a permit, but they're looked at individually. And so there's not a mechanism that we've been able to find to address cumulative impacts or overall load on the area. And that, that's really one of the biggest concerns from an environmental justice standpoint. And so this may not be perfect either.
You get a whole bunch that are just at that threshold and then combine-
And each one on its own meets its own standards. Right.
But those are, that's certainly a question I can raise with El Rapa's staff. I mean, they've, they've provided a lot of input in the creation of this with their enforcement staff, with their permitting staff to kind of help, help me better understand all the workings. So this will, I can definitely, I will take these questions back and get a better understanding.
Some invaluable advice we've gotten on the subcommittee, and I shame on me for forgetting the gentleman's name, but he's from the Sustainability Commission.
Howard Saxon.
He's a environmental consultant, so he has a lot of, a lot of very great knowledge that I think has been of great use to the subcommittee and has provided some good guidance on this.
I actually am going to go Commissioner Duncan and then Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I'd like to just first voice my support for Commissioner Taylor's idea that I've never been one who supports lists very much because of just the ever-changing world. And I think it's also important to realize that this area not only affects, it affects all of it, including the areas up what you call subarea north, which really are joined on one side by I-2 land that is mainly developed out, and then the other side's the airport. So the effect of what goes on there is different than what is done south of Clear Lake. So I think we need to take that into account. I'm not suggesting loosening limitations on some of these things, but recognizing that, you know, there might be different standards that could come into play as far as what's important up in the north versus what's important down in the south area. So that balance, I think, needs to be taken into because like this table is an example, affects the whole area. And yet if you cross one of the lines, you can do it right next door, some of this stuff, so.
By the existing city limits.
Yeah.
Or UGB.
Right. So I think it's important that we make sure that that, how we're affecting adjoining properties, because if we create this correctly, I think a lot of those adjoining properties in that little triangle are going to be, will be recreated into a lot of the small support facilities that'll be needed for these larger manufacturing facilities. So just kind of watch that balance.
Commissioner Taylor.
I think I'll follow up in the subcommittee, but I'll just note for everyone on the commission here is that I think the adjustment review criteria, the only piece that's, from my perspective, might be a helpful addition, is the subsection D actually begins to look at it, but it's specifically talking, having the development impacts will be negligible. at it, but it's specifically talking, having the development impacts will be negligible and talking about a possible alternative mitigation in relation to that. Have a criterion that talks about compatibility and either embedded in that or a specific criterion. And there are other examples of adjustment reviews that actually address that. And really, it's more of a burden of proof to describe the overall development and meet certain criteria of compatibility. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Zach and Terry. Appreciate-
Thanks for your feedback.
-this. And with that, we are to items from commission and staff. Items from staff.
Just a couple of, couple of items. First of all, wanted to remind everybody that the planning commission appointments are happening at the state council on, let's see.
Twenty-second, I think.
Twenty-second, I think is what I heard. Twenty-second? Yep. Hmm, yes, June 22nd. So there's that. Also, I believe we were going to move the meeting from June 29th. I don't think this is gone out yet on your calendars, but the June 29th Planning Commission meeting, there, we have, I think, four absences that day. So we're going to move that to July 13th. So the Eugene comprehensive conversation will happen on July 13th.
Comprehensive plan.
Tentatively.
Yeah, yeah.
What did I say?
Comprehensive conversation. I like that too.
Comprehensive conversation.
That's good. We'll discuss.
Yeah.
So let's see. And we're also tentatively talking about checking in with Planning Commission sometime in mid-August, probably, maybe the 10th, about elections, first of all. Better do that following appointments. And also a preview of the Planning Division work plan moving forward and what that's going to look like. We've had a lot of Envision Eugene work and a lot of other sort of as-needed Planning Commission business coming up. But looking at the other side of Envision Eugene, if we can see that at this point, which I think we can, we also want to just kind of check in about priorities, so.
Thank you. Any items from commission?
Got an, uh-
I did want to have one, other staff announcement, not related to our work plan or anything else, but City Planner and Urban Designer Jeff Speck is coming to town June 17th and he's going to give a public presentation entitled Toward a More Walkable Eugene. It's 5:30, begins with a reception and 6 o'clock, a public presentation at the Holt Center Studio, which is the kind of subterranean courtyard entrance to the right side of the main entrance if you're coming from the south. He's been, he's on kind of a little mini statewide tour with the Transportation and Growth Management Program sponsored through DLCD and ODOT. And we're just, we're fortunate to have him come into town and he's a recently published author of a book entitled The Walkable City, if you're interested.
It's an excellent book. I highly recommend it. And is there a charge for that?
No, free, open to the public, so please join us.
You said that's the 17th?
Seventeenth. Yes, next Wednesday.
All right. Item from commission. Commissioner Duncan?
I just kind of like to voice that I think the way that staff's working, subcommittees, like on the large lots and comprehensive plans and so on, I think that's working well. And I think it kind of gets us a little bit ahead so that some of the planning commissioners come with some background into this, so it's not like teach everybody all over, but it helps, I think it's helping us work through some of these issues. So I support keeping it up.
Okay, thank you.
I was just, I was going to say the same thing. I was going to say the exact same thing. That and great job. Yeah, it's, I really think it's helpful.
A little follow-up on an item that'll be coming to you in two weeks, on June 22nd, will be the growth monitoring program. So that's another element of the Envision Eugene adoption package. Its subcommittee is kind of the technical resource group, which Rick serves on, so they've been doing a lot of work on that and you'll, you'll see that on the 22nd.
Twenty-second of?
June, yeah.
I'm not here.
Shoot, I'm not here either.
Well, we're running out of meetings.
And, and I know the 22nd was also one that we were going to deliberate on South Alamo, wasn't it? Fifteenth and 22nd, or was that?
That one was bumped to July 2nd because of absences.
Okay, okay, that's why I was bringing that up.
So, yeah, we have to slide monitoring into that slot, unfortunately.
Because I know Commissioner Baroski was gone, one of those two, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So how are we doing? We actually have a little bit of time to see how we're doing. How's the three-minute thing working since I brought that up? Commissioner Duncan?
I think it's a great idea, but I think an example of when Jeff and Zach were talking back and forth that we need to stop the clock. I mean, because staff's trying to clarify what a planning commissioner's up to.
Okay.
Nothing against you, Terry. Happy you're monitoring on.
Well, and, and I don't want to get real hard-nosed about it either, and so I think it's, it's one where it just, I think, helps us keep things moving and, you know, obviously, you know.
I think it sets a mind frame that helps us keep it, helps us all keep it moving.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we'll continue it for now, then. Anything else?
Let's go join the sun.
Okay. We're, we're early today and I don't think anybody's going to complain, so.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.